Hi, I'm Bonnie Gabowitz and this is Ward Talk. We start talk about the city of Ann Arbor, the council members and the jobs they're doing to make this city great. Today, we're meeting with Jen Iyer from Ward Four. Welcome Jen, this is our second time we've chatted.
It is, thank you Bonnie, I'm glad to be here.
Yes, but it's been a year, so, and I know you've been very involved with quite a few situations and problems and coming up with your own website, I understand, where you have a newsletter, so I see you're very involved in working on the council and communicating. So let's start with Ward Four and find out what's happening with Ward Four. I understand there's some work that's been done on SciO Church, but it's been delayed, could you tell us about that?
Yes, so SciO Church, there's a reconstruction project. It is, if anyone is watching who drives on SciO Church with any type of regularity, you know how badly it is in need of repair. A portion of it was done from South Main to Seventh Street a couple of years ago, and now we are working on the next segment from South Seventh Street all the way down to Maple.
And does this involve just the surface of the street? Or does it also involve laying of new pipes?
Yeah, there's, there's almost always a component of that water main work that we do in conjunction with road reconstruction. This particular project had another element that really did complicate the project, but it's so necessary. It is the retention, the large retention pond that is being built in what's called Eisenhower Park. It's, it's the, in the Churchill, just butts the Churchill Downs neighborhood. And that retention pond has been a long time coming. In fact, when I was campaigning, it was, it was something that I promised to do everything I could to break the log jam on and get that moving forward. And it is, it's so if you've driven by or maybe take a drive by, if you haven't, you can see the huge, you know, crater that's been created for this retention pond. And this is designed to catch a lot of that water that flows in when we have these big rainstorms that are increasing in frequency as, as the climate changes. It's catching that water that would be going into the Churchill Downs neighborhood and into the Lansdowne neighborhood. And, and it will hold it, you know, until the, the pipes can manage to, to take it away. And so the goal is that we will eliminate that enormous flooding that we've seen in that neighborhood. I mean, streets just completely flooded up, right up to the houses and basements flooded, you know, several times over the past few years. And so, so that work is proceeding and is a result of permitting. There is Nash, there's federal money that's coming in for this and state money. And so there were various levels of permitting that needed to be gone through. And unfortunately, city staff found that the process this year was slower than it has been in the past. And so they were not able to get the road reconstruction started this year. Or rather, they could have, but it would have doubled the cost of the whole project. And so they're holding off on that portion until next year. And so we're going to have to live with the road in the condition that it is for another winter. And then we should see that project start up in the spring.
Right, so it's really dependent on the weather conditions and when it's appropriate for them to do the work.
Right, right, they can't do it over the real hard winter months. And if they started now and finished in the spring, again, that would have doubled the cost for a variety of reasons.
Yeah, okay. And I understand there's some work being done on South Seventh.
Yes.
Is that part of the SciO Church project or is that separate?
It's separate, so that is another project where we are doing water main work. And in conjunction with that, we are resurfacing the roadway, which badly needs it. I was talking to a resident just this week who noted that the apron to her driveway, the, you know, right in front of her driveway has crumbled now down to dirt. And so again, you know, this is another project that I'm really glad to see going forward. This particular one is presenting a little bit of challenge in the design phase because we're really trying to slow down the traffic in that area. South Seventh is inordinately wide going through the neighborhood. And that is actually because it was initially, when it was built, it was meant to be an extension of the arterial and to go all the way out to South Main Street, Ann Arbor-Saline Road. Way back when, neighbors fought it and fought that, that connection. And so it was never realized, but the road remains incredibly wide. And so people treat it, drivers naturally sort of treat it like a 35 mile an hour road rather than a 2025 mile an hour neighborhood road. And so that has presented a lot of safety issues, particularly as it feeds to neighborhood school. And so we're really taking a look at the design and looking at how we can make that road safe for everyone, for drivers, for pedestrians, for bicyclists, slow down that traffic so that it's really treated like the neighborhood street that it is.
Okay, and anything else to cover specifically for Ward Four? We're done with that?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, okay. You just had a council meeting last night, being this month of October. And a new issue came up that I did want to mention because there was concern on the part of the council that the employees of the city had coverage with Blue Cross Blue Shield. And there was some discovery that some of their money was being used for political purposes. Could you elaborate on that? And, and how does it affect the employees?
Sure. So we all know that many corporations have political action committees. Blue Cross, although it is a nonprofit, it really behaves much like a corporation, including in the way that it compensates its CEO, who does not receive nonprofit compensation. But, you know, so Blue Cross is, is just like DTE and Ford and other big corporations in that it has a political action committee through which it donates to candidates. And it was extremely troubling to learn this year. There's a, there's a group of activists working under a coalition called Defend Black Voters. And they had, they did an analysis of the PAC spending for a variety of corporations, including Blue Cross, including Delta Dental, which the city also has a contract with, and other corporations like Ford and Consumers Energy and DTE. And determined that Blue Cross is, you know, spending hundreds of thousands of dollars funding candidates and legislators who are pushing voter suppression laws. Laws that will have the effect of suppressing minority votes. Legislators who are promoting the big lie that Trump won the 2020 election. Legislators who even participated in January 6th and participated in efforts to send fake electors to the Capitol to fake certify the election. And what made this doubly troubling is that Blue Cross was one of several corporations whose CEO signed a letter calling on legislators back in 2021 not to engage in this type of activity, not to push voter suppression legislation. And so while on the one hand, they're making public statements that are very lofty and right and that we in Ann Arbor agree with, on the other hand, they're taking their money, part of which comes from the taxpayers of Ann Arbor, and funneling it through their PAC to these candidates that are working on voter suppression legislation. It is uncontrollable.
Right, so what can the, what can the city do about this at this point?
Right, so last night, we held a rally before council, before our council meeting with the Defend Black Voters Coalition. So calling on Blue Cross and other corporations to stop funding these extremist legislators and candidates. And then at our council meeting, we passed a resolution 91 to, again, formally as a body, call on Blue Cross and other corporations to, you know, if they're, if they're engaging in political spending, to align their political spending with their self-professed values, which Blue Cross absolutely has not done. They've been completely hypocritical about this. And in fact, Mayor Taylor even reached out to the CEO of Blue Cross, Dan Lepp, and tried to engage in a conversation about it, and he just got the stiff arm. So, so we took the step to publicly call on them to change their ways. We also, more importantly, I think, directed our city administrator to consider and report back to us on the feasibility of including some sort of, of method of checking when we're, when we're looking at city contracts and, and awarding contracts to companies, checking to see whether they're involved in political activity. And if so, if it aligns with their self-professed values.
And how long is, is this, this contract in effect as it stands now?
The contract that we passed last night was a year contract. Unfortunately, we really had no other choice but to pass it because it, it's our employees' prescription benefits. So we already have a contract with Blue Cross for their healthcare. And this was folding prescription benefits underneath that contract. It's a nine, almost a $9 million contract. And, and our employees need their medicine. And we're not going to take their medicine away, obviously. And there was no time after we, you know, learned of Blue Cross's activities to go through and start the process for finding a provider.
Well, we'll definitely, yeah, we'll definitely keep up on what's happening with this. And when we come back after our break, we're going to talk about the whole city and some other issues. We'll be right back. We're going to take a break now. And meanwhile, you can write down if, our email address, if you'd like to contact us, give us your input, ask us questions. You may email us at ctn@a2gov.org. You could also follow us on Twitter at twitter.com/ctnannarbor. You can watch all of the programs on CTN, including the other channels on YouTube at youtube.com/ctnannarbor. We'll be right back.
What if the city of Ann Arbor created a reliable, 100% clean, affordable, locally built, and community-owned energy utility? The city is looking to do just that by creating the Ann Arbor Sustainable Energy Utility, or SEU, a community-owned energy utility that provides electricity from local solar and battery storage systems installed on homes and businesses throughout the city. Learn more and share your thoughts on the proposed sustainable energy utility by going to a2gov.org/a2seu.
Ah, greasy pizza boxes.
Ugh, glass bottles not emptied.
Yogurt containers with, ew! Cat food still in the can is bad, but oh, so good.
Hey, what are you doing?
Relax ma'am, we're here to help.
Oh, this stuff could ruin the entire recycling load.
Wow, I had no idea.
Chill, we'll show you the ropes.
Michigan needs to recycle better, and that change starts with you. Learn the rules of recycling at recyclingeraccoons.org.
Voting absentee in Ann Arbor's upcoming election is so easy, even a kid can do it. Simply register to be an absentee voter by sending the proper paperwork to the Ann Arbor City Clerk via email, mail, or in person. As the election approaches, absentee voters will receive their ballot in the mail. To vote, completely darken the box opposite each of your choices. When complete, place the ballot in the secret sleeve so votes cannot be seen and the number stub is visible. Place your ballot and secret sleeve in the return envelope. Seal, sign a date in the designated area, stamp, and mail. Or deliver your ballot in person to the city clerk before the close of polls on Election Day.
This is Bonnie Gabowitz, we're back with Ward Talk and Jen Iyer from Ward Four. Jen, there have been a lot of ongoing issues that the city is working on. And one of the major changes in the city is what we call the TC1, TC standing for Transit Corridor. And some changes coming up. And I think there is some confusion as to what's going on and why it's going on. So tell us where we're at with that. Is there any progress in the, the decision-making or the actual work that's going to be done to make changes?
Yes, so this is a really, really exciting change that we're making here in the city. Just broadly, I'll back up and say, when I was campaigning in 2020, there, although people have a lot of different opinions about how much Ann Arbor should grow, where it should grow, what our future path should be, I think we all acknowledge that Ann Arbor is growing and, and we can't stop that, nor would we really want to. We don't want to be a city that's not growing, otherwise we're a city that's dying. But the one thing that I really heard wide agreement on is the idea that we can grow housing on our transit corridors, that we can densify along those transit corridors. These are areas that are largely away from, you know, single-family homes. And they're served by our ATA, AAA bus system so that people can live a car-free or a car-light lifestyle. The idea is with climate change, with our A2 Zero Plan, we need to build up our cities, stop the suburban sprawl, and allow for more housing in our cities. In Ann Arbor, we have 80,000 people who commute in every day. If we could get even a portion of those folks living here, then we could really cut down on that, on those car emissions and improve the quality of life for those commuters. And so-
And just to say that, that, you know, there are help-wanted signs all over the city and we desperately need a larger workforce. And having improvement in this area would help more people not only live here, but come to work here as well.
Right, and so the idea with these transit corridors is the, the housing would sort of naturally be a little more affordable than downtown because the cost of developing is lower. And that there would be mixed uses, ideally, that we would have, you know, retail and housing mixed together so that we're not just, we're not just creating more housing, but that we're also, that we're allowing for other uses and more retail commercial uses to go along with that. You know, the new residents that would, we would be welcoming into our community. And TC1 is an idea that has been, I mean, researched for many years in Ann Arbor, discussed, planned. There've been lots and lots of public engagement meetings around TC1 over the years. And it actually exists as a concept in seven different areas of our comprehensive plan.
So tell me, what finally pushed this forward? If this was something that's been in the works for a long time, what finally made the difference where now you're getting momentum?
Yes, what made the difference was the 2020 election where a majority of council, after that election, is of the mind that we need, we do need to grow as a city. We need to grow thoughtfully and responsibly. And we need to implement the plans that we've been talking about for so many years. The previous council majority that was elected in 2018 very specifically tabled this idea. They did not want it to go forward. And the 2020 election, and then again in 2022, even more council members, candidates were elected who support the idea of, of Ann Arbor growing to meet our needs for housing so that we can welcome more neighbors here, so that we can fight climate change and so that we can make housing more affordable by growing our housing supply. Because right now, demand is just so far out of whack with supply that that's what's really driven our housing costs up.
Great, so this is something we'll be following for a while.
It is, we, we, we've already changed the zoning, implemented that zoning in the State Street and Eisenhower area. Now we're going to be, it's coming before council for a second reading at our next meeting. And that's going to be for the Maple Stadium Corridor. And that is an area that was identified right when this planning began around TC1, that, that was an area that this was designed for. And so I believe the council will be moving forward with it.
Great. Now, another topic that has been developing more and more is the unarmed crisis response that was developed in order to free up the police department from being of service to problems that could be handled by other professionals. So what is the update on that?
Yes, so at this moment, we are in the public engagement phase of that. And there is a survey that folks can access on the city website. I encourage everyone to take that survey, fill it out. It's a quick online survey. And it really, it just asks a variety of questions regarding how folks would really like to see this implemented, how would they use it? How do they think it would best serve our community? In addition to that, we, the consultants that are helping us do this public engagement are doing some more community outreach. That is yet to come, where they will specifically, I believe, be reaching out to various segments of the community. And council just passed an amendment to their contract for some additional public engagement. So that part is really important. We need everybody's feedback so that we can really create a system that is what the public expects and needs.
Do, do you know offhand what the timeline is for the survey?
The survey closes in, I want to say, a couple of weeks, so.
Okay, so people can go on, on the website and, and click on the public survey?
Yes, that is, yeah, it's on the city website. If you just search, Google search for Ann Arbor City Unarmed Response Survey, it should come up.
Okay. Now, one of the big topics, of course, has been traffic and how to make the road safer. And I know you, you're very involved in that. And there have been some major changes on drivers taking turns on downtown lights where it's restricted. Some, there are, I believe, 50 different turns that are now not allowed. And mostly right turns, right on red. So first of all, what is this supposed to do? And what is the information behind it? And how is the public being informed so that there is no confusion?
Right. This was a very recent council action. It was something that was proposed years ago by one of our pedestrian activists, Linda Diane Felton, who has since passed. But I'm so glad that, that we've now passed this, this idea that, that she got going here. But this is, this is not just a local idea. The Federal Highway Traffic Safety Administration supports this idea of eliminating right turns on red. And I'll just read you real quick what they have to say about it. Prohibiting right turns on red is a simple, low-cost measure. Together with a leading pedestrian interval, the signal changes can benefit pedestrians with minimal impacts on traffic. They should be done in locations with substantial pedestrian volume and places where children cross. Now, the, the concept behind it is, and I think we all know as drivers, when we're approaching a right, a, a red light where a right turn on red is allowed, there is a natural tendency for drivers to just creep right up, right into the crossbar.
And not really stop.
And not really stop, yeah, there's the rolling stop. There's the, you know, I'm just looking this way to see if, if, if traffic is coming, but I'm not really looking for the pedestrians that might be coming this way. And, and it, the interesting fact about it is that right turn on red was actually only implemented during the oil crisis of the 70s as a way to, yeah.
I didn't know that.
Yes, as a way to save fuel economy during a time when, you know, that was, now we could say gas prices are high and we all want to save on fuel. But it's nothing like what we had during the oil crisis when, when there were, no one could even get gas and there were lines at the pump and everything. And, you know, when you consider as well that with the advent of new technology, cars that stop instead of idle, they turn off. And of course, electric vehicles, it's just simply, it's a, it's a relic of a bygone era. And we need to prioritize safety for, for, not just pedestrians, by the way, not just pedestrians and bicyclists, but it's also for drivers themselves. So we did an analysis, the city police did an analysis of crash data. And there were quite a few vehicle, on-vehicle crashes in right turn on red situations, so, and affecting often older drivers. So this is something that is, is just a good idea, common sense, and I'm glad to see that we're implementing it. The implementation simply will be signage, like you would see, you know, at any, there are already places throughout the city where there is no right turn on red. So those signs will be installed. And traffic enforcement will be heavier at first, just until drivers get the hang of it, and then just, you know, business as usual.
Okay, and were there a couple of spots where there was no left turn as well?
Yeah, that's a good, I, I believe so, because it, we do have some of those areas downtown where you can, it's, you know, there's a one-way street. And so there, there was a left turn on red that was permitted, and that would be treated the same.
Okay, so drivers and walkers should be aware that there are designated corner, not every corner is going to have this, but there are designated corners that will restrict right on red.
Yeah, and I would say it's really most of downtown. We do have to work with the state to implement it on state trunk line roads. So that, you know, Main Street and Huron, those types of streets, which are owned by the state. And, and, you know, the state oversees them. We have to, we have to work with them and get their permission to implement it there.
Okay, well, let's just hope that this really makes a difference and the, the traffic flows okay with less accidents and no accidents.
Right, that's the goal, Vision Zero is the goal.
Well, thank you so much for joining us and giving us some updates on these important issues.
Thank you, it's been a pleasure.
And this is Bonnie Gabowitz for Ward Talk. I'll see you next month.